Okay, I think we'll get started. Welcome everyone. Thank you for coming back to our meeting and our continued discussion. I think we'll start again with introductions and we'll do those at the table and then our those who have joined us out in the audience. So I'm Donna Wolford, I'm on the superintendent.
I'm Heather Altberg, I'm on the school board.
I'm Phil Sossier, I'm on the school board.
I'm Strah, school board.
Katie LeRanque, middle school director.
Drew Price, middle school teacher.
Tim Thompson, citizen.
Kimberly Carr, I'm on the school board.
Carl O'Brien, of parent in Elizabeth.
Jeff Shannon, high school principal.
Valerie Adams, town council.
Peter Sizito, school nutrition board.
DJ Nelson, parent.
Andy Patton, resident.
Perry Schwartz, facilities and transportation director.
Marianne Lynch, resident and former parent.
Jenny Grimmick, resident, parents, and I'll also add structural engineer that works on a lot of school projects.
Erin Taylor, school health and safety.
Now, Serge, just town manager.
Judy Garvin, from the town council.
Suzanne, I'm Bill Hogg's parent.
Elizabeth Seifert, school board.
RC Weeks, business manager for the school department.
And our audience?
Valerie Deverus, town council.
Derek Converse, parent.
Jeff Holden, citizen.
Tom Dunham, citizen.
If you all want to move up a little bit so you can hear, if you're free to, just get your chairs up. So I'd just like to review the charge for the project. But our charge is to review the needs assessment report, determine priorities, determine the size and scope of a future project and bond, and make a recommendation to the school board. So we should keep that charge in mind as we continue with our work. So to start, I did want to, we got some good news. We had, we submitted 12 revolving renovation projects to the state, and I think you've probably heard about us talking about these and saying, well, if we get money for these, that would be great. We did end up getting six projects awarded for a total of $390,429. So those are items that were in the needs assessment report, and you have a copy of them in the packet. Poncove, the middle school and the high school each got awarded funding for, and these are mostly, I think they all were, safety, one structure. But those, the three, the first three were towards the science labs and putting showers and eye washes and plumbing for those things in our science labs, which is a safety issue. The next one at the high school was for the metal shop, indoor quality issues, and there was also a lift that will make the shop ADA compliant. There's a roof structure reinforcement at the high school, and the intercom and public address system at the high school. That is a safety issue because when Jeff or whoever makes an announcement about going into a lockdown or whatever's going on, every place in the building doesn't have access to hearing, hearing those things. So this will expand our and improve our intercom and public address system so that no matter where you are in the building, you will hear announcements about what's going on. So definitely a safety issue. Do you explain the 70/30 of these projects in the bonfire?
Yes, so this, the deal is that it's 30% forgiveness rate. So the 30% forgiveness, essentially a grant, is $117,128.70. For this amount of $390,000, 0% financing, it will be a five-year payback, period $54,660.06 a year after the completion of the construction.
So if you look further in the packet, you'll see a more detailed explanation of what each project is. So usually you can look at those things. But we have specific instructions from the state that we have to follow about putting, we are in the process of putting out a request for qualifications, and then we will have to interview and select art and architect and design company engineers. And then we'll have to put out bids for the, so they'll do the design and then we'll put out the bids for the actual work. To be done, the good thing about all of these projects is they can be done while our students are in school. So we don't have to miss, not misplace, but displaced, or large amount of students. Or we don't have to wait till the weather clears, they can get started as soon as we get the funding. So this was very exciting to us. We were told, oh, you probably won't get anything. I tell, we feel like this is great because they awarded us six projects. You'll remember that we submitted a little bit under a million dollars worth of projects. So we got almost half, so it's good. So we were happy about that. So starting with some good news is always good. And we can take these all-time renovations, might have plans in the future because they're going to be completed. Last March, if some of you were involved in this, we had over 100 people from the town involved in a, what we call the Future Search. We brought people together and talked about sort of the history of education, kept a little bit of what some of our struggles and our successes were, our trials and our sorries, and then really talked about where we wanted education to go in the future. We had charts all over the place, we had lots and lots of data. Following that, in several school board workshops with some volunteer citizens that helped us, we really analyzed and synthesized all the data and looked for themes and, really themes that were carried through. And the school board adopted, wrote and adopted five goals, and you have those goals in mind here, and they were adopted in September of this year. These really reflect the synthesis and analysis of all that data and really represent all of, hopefully, all and most, most of all, of the thoughts that came out at that Future Search workshop. Meanwhile, the administrative team is working on some outcomes for each of these goals that will be taken back to the schools, and each school will develop their plan for how they're going to meet these goals and the outcomes. So you'll notice the last two goals. One is safe, sustainable, and effective facilities. Our schools will be safe and effective facilities. They will be updated and maintained to meet the needs of students and staff in accordance with long-term financial planning. That seems to relate to the work that we're all here to do. And environmental responsibility. The school department will prioritize environmental responsibility, including storage, stewardship, and sustainability. So our work tonight is going to really focus on those two goals and lead a sense of the future. So turn it over to you.
All right. Well, welcome, everyone. We thought that we've had the opportunity to gain a lot of facts, to be in a larger group, and we thought it might be nice to break up into smaller groups, have some more intimate conversations with specific guidelines, and then come back and report it out. Above or on your agenda here are the four questions that we'd like you to contemplate and discuss and be prepared to report back in a little bit of time. It's what does safe mean? What does effective facilities mean? What is our environmental responsibility as a district? And what is our financial responsibility to the district and the community? And so when we think of those, you know, we'd like you to have the idea of the information that you've gained, the needs assessment that you've read, the facts that you've heard, and a little bit less of opinions and more thinking of these strategic goals in mind. Because these strategic goals reflect, as best we can, the will of the district and the townspeople. As Donna mentioned, you know, there was about 100 people that came together and spent quite a bit of time formulating these ideas and synthesizing them down to this. So as best we can, this is the will of the district. And so based on this strategic plan goal, based on the needs assessment and the information we've been given by the professionals here, what, how would you define these four questions? How would you answer these four questions? So we're going to break up into groups and go out and report. We've got some sticky notes and some, like, big Post-it sticky notes, oh, some hash.
Some passwords.
Some pencils and all that stuff. We'll give you about 20 minutes or so, is what we decided. And the best way we figured to do this is to just count around. We're going to hopefully have seven groups, so we'll count by sevens. I'll start. Sometimes goes well and sometimes... Here's what I'm going to say, I've done this a lot of times. Two hints. One, remember your number. If you think you're going to get confused, write the number down. That's a little helpful. And two, pay attention, just for 30 seconds here while we do this, all right? I'm one.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Five.
Six.
Seven.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four. Five. Six. Seven. One.
Two. Three. Four.
Five. Six.
Seven. One. Two.
Three.
And then...
Four. Five. Six.
Seven.
So there has to be a recorder at each group, but I have just kind of paper, take a couple sheets.
Doesn't look like there's a lot of tables. So you can just move your chairs and go sit in a corner and find your own place, or pull the tables away, whatever you need to do. Let's do it right now. Well, you guys can find your own space. We're not kids.
No, we're the ones.
Yeah, who are the ones? All right, let's all the ones meet over by Elizabeth to start with. Who are the twos? Let's all meet over by Jeff over there. How about threes?
You think you're a three?
I'm a two.
Are you a two?
I'm a two.
All right, all the threes will meet by Donna. How about fours?
We'll meet up here.
Okay, by Peter. Fives? Who else is a five? Let's go by DJ. Sixes? I'll be with Andy somewhere.
I'm just working.
And that is...
We're answering most of our questions.
Yes. So the timing is about 10 to 7. We'll try to meet around 11 or 12. So as we come together, you're welcome to just go back to your regular seat, and then hopefully there's a spokesperson for each group. And I'll go around and we'll ask a question, and then I'll call on group one and group two and group three. And Donna here is going to write it all out, since there's no place to put it up, and then once it's all written out, we'll post it for people to look. But hopefully that was good discussion. Is everybody back? It looks like it. All right. So the first one was what does safe, and how do we want to do it? We have a few, should we say all of what we have?
Just one.
Oh, we're just going to choose one. Okay, what does safe mean? I thought this was interesting. Too much visibility from the outside in. Meaning there's too many windows. I think there was a reference to, like, Poncove area, being able to see in to the cafeteria and...
So that would be unsafe?
That would be unsafe.
Okay, so not having too many windows. Few windows.
Yeah, in the wrong place.
Privacy?
Privacy. Privacy, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, number two.
So ours is a little more complicated than today. Trying to pull out one of them.
Just one.
It's sort of a three-part, they kind of go together though, so I feel like I need to say it all. For us, being in a safe environment meant both structural safety, number one, secure, your security, so doors and entries and that sort of thing, designed for risks that our children face, and three, the school climate. Students should feel valued and welcomed. And that there's a tension there between those three, but those are three important things to address.
All right, group three.
Group three, so we had a lot of thoughts. I guess I'll say the flow of students through the building, like, not feeling too crowded or too tight in hallways or in any of the spaces. The size of the space for the occupants.
Number four. Oh, you're right. I switched. That's why.
I was one, and then I switched.
You did what you...
Oh, so who was one?
I did write my name.
So what was one?
We're one. I was not going to argue with you on that. But I'm like, we're one.
All right, I'll be four now. That's right, so I switched, sorry.
So we have sort of, yeah, so you already did the overcrowding. So we have the overcrowding, not just in the hallways, but in the classrooms. The students are spilling out into the halls, they're so crowded. In the cafeteria and all the spaces, overcrowding.
All right, number five.
I was looking at what does safe mean and kind of looking at from the best practices of operation of a facility, considering the compliance level in relation to the laws and requirements from the state, federal, and so on and so forth, as well as security levels. Best practices, avoidance of intruder events, environmental safety within the facility, and in relation to all the regulations that one is called.
That's just one.
What am I supposed to write?
It's hard to choose one.
I know.
We'll come around again, right?
Choose one.
Yeah, we're going to get the same one.
A lot of that has to do with the required...
Compliance.
Compliance, compliance.
Full compliance, 100%.
So you were five. Number six.
Most of our stuff was around, you know, the physical plant, so I'll just say taking all reasonable steps to reduce threats. We had other things here too, but in general, I think a lot of work. Taking all reasonable steps to reduce threats.
Oh.
Secure, reduce threats. All right, and number seven. That was us. We talked about safety inside the building. Living specifically at the cafeteria for employees and children, the sort of various levels that the students have to walk up and down, and that the folks working with the kitchen did as well, I think.
How would you call that?
What would you call that?
Occupational safety?
Yeah, that's what I think, occupational.
Occupational. That's what we call it.
You want a camera, OEO, too?
Okay, so you were seven. So back to number one. Air quality. Safe, healthy air. Number two.
So I get all of ours.
Nice deep package. Number three.
So this is just seeing if there's any that we missed?
Yeah. Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I guess for the students to feel free from anxiety and insecurity as they enter the building.
All right.
Four.
Four. I'm going to add on, and you don't necessarily need to write this, but when you talked about occupational safety, I thought it was interesting. We had Peter in our group, and he informed us that Poncove in the middle school, if there's a fire alarm, they can't hear it.
In the kitchen.
In the kitchen. And that there's no light in there. And so there was a time when something happened.
We had a lockdown a couple of years ago.
There was lockdown, and the kitchen had no idea.
They're still serving lunch.
So you don't necessarily... Sure. And we noticed that it's going to be helped in the high school with this grant, that that's not helping Poncove in the middle school. All right, so five.
You sure you don't want to add another chapter? Okay. So with code compliance, you're talking, are you even encompassing, like, fire and emergency egress and all that stuff?
All of that.
All right. Lots.
We have a nice story about a kid that has to be carried out of the building, like, you don't have a concrete egress for her, but okay.
All right, next, number six.
Are there technology solutions to make the building safer? Instead of just physical plant changes, somebody wondering that.
All right, number seven. We talked about traffic flow in going throughout parking lots with the buses, but...
Circle and also delivery.
Yeah, and delivery. Yeah. So let's do one more round and see if people have anything else that they'd like to add. Go ahead.
So we would aspire to safe spaces for recess that are fenced and not easily accessible to any stranger off the street. Where do I want? I don't have to look through trucks driving through recess.
Two, we're still good? Group three. You guys are good? They had a vision, we did it, okay. Group four, I think we're pretty set. Everything has been said. So group five.
The only thing that comes to mind is following best practices and enforcing them regarding the safety and security of the buildings.
Okay.
You know what I mean, as far as, like, if you say you're going to have a lockdown building, I mean, it's like there was no shoe holding the open door in the back of the building.
Yeah. Six.
I think we've covered it.
Okay, and seven, Kimberly?
We also talked about, I think, safety, being healthy. So the healthiness of the schools, asbestos, the various chemicals and the floor cleaners and stuff. And then also noise level at the cafeteria, the cafeterium. Rapid consumption of food.
Music room.
Music room, noise level and...
And you said it, but I just wanted to make sure they heard it, the rapid consumption of lunchtime. That's not healthy and it's probably not safe either. And then, I don't know if you're going to say, Kimberly, but the other one...
One other thing that hasn't been mentioned is the school resource presence. The school resource officer, what they do, how effective they are, where they are on a daily basis.
Did we address this in the ADA, or what you were referring to, Elizabeth? We have it written down as optimal layout for evacuation in emergencies.
But that's separate.
It could be improved if it fails in certain parts of the buildings.
Anybody else have...
Okay, what's the...
So the next one is... So number one.
Meet, I'm going to wait for Donna to be right. Effective facilities meet the current and future educational needs of students.
Number two.
Our first one sort of built on that. It's important, teaching and learning in all the various fields and subject matters. We recognize there may be different designs for different...
And number three.
We had one, so visitors can comfortably observe the teaching in the classrooms. Visitors can comfortably observe the space of...
So number, are you ready? Number four, we had ADA compliance. If we're not ADA compliant, it's not effective for those kids. Number five.
We're very similar to other people as far as helping sort of be... Effectiveness is defined by being able to help obtain the goals or achieve the goals identified for the community. So that was probably a big part of it. We're also looking at providing educators with tools to be able to do the best of their abilities to obtain the best results from the students. That's the bricks and mortar or the flexibility of that, of being able to adapt to them.
Six.
We had several. I'll start with, do the facilities match the professional needs of the users and have the appropriate amount of flexibilities?
And seven.
We talked about the effective facilities, the energy that kind of, like, the psychological impact of effective facilities, promoting and reflecting excellence, supporting retention and attraction of teachers and new families to the community.
Learning, positive, intellectual, all this and that sort of.
So we'll look at the tape. Promoting, I think I said something about promoting and reflecting excellence.
I think one of the things, just to add to it, one of the things we touched on was we're not very effective beyond our, you know, blue ribbon status at encouraging other new families to come in because of the building's state. You know, it's not, it's not a selling point. And in order for us to, like, maintain enrollment, like, that's part of being effective.
And moving on to excellent staff, I think we talked about in that as well, that while we're a great place to work, there are other great places that we have we offer more of a...
Nevermind, do you have anything else to add?
Parking and traffic functionality.
Comfortable and inviting, and by that we mean function appropriately, like heating, HVAC, plumbing, that sort of thing. It's a comfortable environment for working.
Thanks, Ben. Number four, I think we said it, enough space to meet the needs of students and staff, like appropriate space, so that testing's not happening in closets and Poncove and...
So that that's also like flowing around.
Right. And you could even take that into the cafeteria so that there's not different levels, you know, effective space. Uh, number five. Six.
Making buildings more energy efficient, just generally operationally cheaper to run. That came up last time, I think when you told us, or someone said that Scarborough High School is being run at a much less cost, the brand new high school versus this facility here. The other thing we have was, you know, making facilities available 12 months a year for the whole town.
That's your best, uh...
My back.
Uh, Kimberly. You said effective facilities are cost-effective and easy and efficient to maintain.
Just to elaborate on the easy to maintain, we talked about how Perry had said at one of the prior meetings, he feels like it's plain whack-a-mole. And so therefore that's not effective maintenance of the buildings, if you're just putting out fires and you need to have a system in place that, you know, is proactive.
Alright. Anything else that anybody wants to add?
We had also... Okay, go ahead.
We had talked about, um, requiring what's necessary, what we need to accomplish currently, but with a significant eye to figure, you know, what, how things are gonna look in a new facility that can support education.
And we also had a conversation about, um, so like what does effective mean to you? It doesn't mean satisfactory, which led to what does satisfactory mean? And so I feel like that could have been another question, what does satisfactory mean to you? And to us, it means numerous things, but being effective is definitely, um, above satisfactory.
It's not whack-a-mole. It's not whack-a-mole. Andy?
Derek, our resident bit guy in the building business, pointed out that a lot of times you have to spend a little bit more money initially in order to save money in the long run. And that's something to keep in mind when it comes to building construction.
Yeah, along the lines of low maintenance, yeah. Perry would love that, I'm sure.
Did we miss anything, Tim, on the effective side?
So next up is environmentally responsible.
Number one. We need to work towards greener buildings, which means energy efficiency in all the different ways that we can leverage as possible. Could mean, uh, more windows actually, and less use of electric electricity. It could mean more insulation, could mean whatever, you know, better HVAC, all sorts of things, but just, you know, really approach towards greener buildings.
Our first one was kind of a general principle as well, is we recognize that our schools are the heart of our community, the largest employer, the largest buildings, most used, and so we should see this as a challenge to the environmental leaders.
And number three.
One of ours was to help the buildings themselves promote environmental stewardship in the students at the occupants of the building. Sort of use it as an educational tool to show students.
Number four, commenting on what Andy and Derek were talking about, efficient facilities that are environmentally friendly and have cost savings. Efficient facilities? That are environmentally friendly? And have cost savings?
And environmental responsibility of maximizing the physical plant and what you have to work with.
Jamie mentioned that town council may be planning with the idea of a climate action goal for the town, in which case that that might be a normal pass-through for the schools if there's a climate action goal, it is assumed by the town council on behalf of the town.
Planning for the future green products and practices. More sustainability. Anything else, Elizabeth?
Yeah, one I think was mentioned, but I don't see it on there, sort of subset of one, which is that we use this opportunity to educate. Someone said that was an opportunity to educate mindfulness about energy efficiency, usage, conservation with our students in the public. The idea being that whatever project we go forward with and should incorporate environmental responsible goals, and we should showcase that. This is a great opportunity to educate and for people to, especially our students, to see what we're doing and see how it's important.
And do you have anything else?
I think it's reduce environmental footprint, conscious of materials.
It's more like a footprint, is that right? And the materials, but I think Kimberly said that last time. Yeah. I think we're all set.
The challenge of building new versus maintaining existing, as far as the whole energy needed to produce one, you know, to create all the materials in to build the brand new building, demoing the old, kind of looking at that whole carbon footprint exchange.
Andy, anything else?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
No, I don't think we have to cover some sort of safety, I think it's been covered, and practice and teaching.
Yeah, I just want to add one word, just because one of our members specifically mentioned it, related to carbon footprint, like the reuse of facilities as much as possible to reduce landfill. And it gets to what Matt was saying, I think it's a variation of what Matt was saying. Short, though, so it's something one of our members said, so reuse of the facility as much as possible, it's really getting at the idea of not landfilling.
So Perry mentioned kind of the difficulty around the sustainability aspect, living in a coastal community, that because of the climate, because of the environment that we live in, that the resources that we have to expend to maintain, whether it be rain or whatever, is significantly higher than other communities.
And the products we choose.
Yeah. Ready?
Is it a long one?
It's a little bit of a long one. So, um, we kind of have, this is more of a philosophy, so develop a long-range plan. Of careful and responsible investing. In our building or assets, whatever you want to. That is considerate of the community. And I would add a benefit to the community as well.
Good, so we also had that, so we can check that out. Our first one was ensure that taxpayer dollars are spent wisely, be good stewards.
It's sort of similar, balancing the needs of the students versus the ability of the residents to shoulder the tax burden.
So I think we've said all those things, just in slightly different words, so it's all there.
Similar vein, but just maximize in the highest and best effect, in the best of our facilities.
So we began with maximize...
Maximize the highest and best effectiveness of our facilities. And we've also discussed the same, maximizing the best results, receiving the highest number of results from reinvestment of public funds.
Me, uh, I've got a bunch of things here. Remind ourselves of the one-town concept, and the collaboration with the town council is critically important.
Really striving for long-term planning, not short-sighted vision. Staggering the financial burden. We also talked about the, um, trying to come up with some stability of cost, I think again, you're kind of looking to the maintenance, but unexpected costs. You just don't, you know, it's hard to forecast what your spending's gonna be, but I think that's good financial, stewards have more of a stable vision of the cost of maintaining our facilities.
Can I add to what you said about spending wisely, more so that things last long-term versus short-term Band-Aid fixes?
Yes, and ours was, um... So it's financial responsibility, but also responsibility to this group and this process, which was, we hope that there is a long-term commitment by the entire town to whatever plan is developed, so that we all agree on something that is sustainable, that will actually happen if we develop this 20-year plan. That whoever comes and goes from different leadership positions, that there's a commitment that we made. And that we're gonna follow through with our plans and investments.
So that kind of connected to the one-town concept, as well as a job change and new people step in.
Because, I mean, that can cause a lot of instability too, not just sort of like, oh, we've been all this time and we got through, you know, phase one, but just financial instability and that sort of stuff.
Yeah, one of ours was, in addition to the bonding we may have to do, is to make sure we look for opportunities for other funding opportunities as we go through the process, through grants or fundraising, efficiency measures thrown out there, but just other financial opportunities.
Just had, consider all citizens, not just the ones who have schools.
Natalie? How about you, Andy?
Financial modeling around debt structure or long-term planning. There's obviously a lot of concern about the long-term price tag of this, and I think there was some discussion that we shouldn't be thinking three to five years out, we should be possibly thinking 10 years out. Particularly as it relates to the possibility that the political winds in Augusta might change, and there might be some money that might become available in the out years for some of the work we might want to...
We talked about not overspending and not wasting money, spending money that will last into the future. I think the not overspending and not wasting money was a lot in the same lines of sometimes you have to spend a little money to pay... Anybody else?
Somebody mentioned, you know, just the word investment versus expense. I mean, investment is, we think of things in a much longer-term way versus expenses. You know, we think of just fixing things, and then all of a sudden fifteen years down the line, we could look down the road back and say, well, what did we really, were these good investments? Or do we just encourage expenses? So just investment versus expense is something that came up.
We have two more there. One is, sort of the flip side of all this, is that we also want to maintain the quality of our schools, fiscal quality of our schools, recognizing people who move here for school. So there's a financial responsibility to us as taxpayers, to make sure, to maintain those high, you know, standards. Which helps us in the long run. And then the last one was, is sort of, I think, what I just heard, a little variation of that, which is, in my words, don't throw good money out for bad. You know, so in other words, don't make small investments that are going to have to be replaced in a short period of time.
Anything else?
Andy, did, we talked a little bit about what type of modeling, what the school, how the different teaching would be done, but also what the population would look like.
The school population?
Yeah.
I'll pick you, why don't you hear what you have to say.
Well, this is part of, when we talk about modeling and investment, we talk, going from community to investment, I think one thing that would be helpful would be, what is the school population going to look like over the next five to ten years? We go out and talk about being one hundred percent behind us, that wouldn't seem good for that.
Do you mean just strictly numbers, or do you mean numbers and needs?
Well, I think
That's really.
Numbers would be part of it, but just, but what's a classroom, what's a classroom going to look like? Moving forward, are we going to be building classrooms for the future, or are we going to continue to build them the way they were twenty years ago? It's important.
What you meant, population projections.
Well, I think that's important too, because that's something you hear quite a bit about.
So we thought, next on the agenda is that we would, there's a sheet like this that everybody has, it's from the needs assessment. And, um, we thought we'd just review what is on here. What this sheet is. So, um, this sheet are the items that were decided in the needs assessment that were of high priority. And so we compiled them all together and, you know, they go from, I'll just read a few of them, door compliance issues, new cafeteria and kitchen, a big one. But gender-neutral bathrooms seem like it's a high need, according to the study. Roof compliance issues, again, I'm skipping around here, fire rating, boiler room, paint spray booth, exit width dimensions, so that seems like egress to me. I'm skipping down, provide metal dust collection system.
We got that.
I was just going to say, we got that. Yeah, so that's great. Repairs at water heaters, new secure entrance and support spaces, that's a big ticket item as well.
We can take off provided ventilation for well now, so it's too long.
Yeah. Security camera improvements, that might be some that we can take off, but for the high school, but that might be for the whole district. So there's a wide range of that, and we just wanted to refresh people's memories of what what was labeled and identified as the media discoveries from the needs assessment. We just thought that would be important data for people to have fresh in front of their mind again as we move on. Any questions about that?
Oh, here's another one, metal shop, we can take that off.
There's the good news coming out again. A lot of.
So the word, should we?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. The emergency.
Emergency plumbing.
Yeah. So that's good news.
Roof print was. We're cutting it down.
We are cutting it down, little by little. So, was it just yesterday? It was. Colby A. Company and Scott Simon came and went with a few of us and provided this document that's in front of you right now, with some potential hypothetical options. And I want to reiterate, because there have been comments about this before, and they mentioned this as well when they spoke to us. There are many, many, many options and possibilities of where we can go here. These are just a few. They have to start with something, they have to grab a few ideas, and so these are just a few ideas that they have presented to us. But by no means is our future restricted or limited to what is offered here. Knowing that in all four options, there's a twenty percent schematic design level offer that would be required in order to accurately size a town bond and create the preliminary level of drawings needed for that. There is, did we add that, is that on here? We've got the drawings for each one, but I don't see, yeah, I don't think that it was. Oh, it's on the back. So on the back, as you go through and look at these documents, and I'd like to apologize for not getting you ahead of time, but we
I just talked about this afternoon.
Just got them, so that's part of the reason why it was so late in getting them to you. But the design, the options are written down, and then on the very last page is a small breakdown of the cost. And so when I mentioned the schematic design, if you look under option one, at some point down there, it's right there, yeah, lower school schematic design, if you look under option two, there's another one. So that's what that is referring to, it's the work required in order to be able to effectively get the right information to put it out for a bond. So going through the options, we thought, we have about a half hour or so, a little bit less, we thought we'd review some of these potential options, not exhausted options. Option one is a phase lower school or middle school building replacement. Phase one is a new school building would be constructed adjacent to the existing middle school and occupied temporarily by the existing lower school students and staff. The existing cafeteria and gymnasiums would remain in place until the second phase of this project is approved. Renovations will be made to the high school to address security and other items as identified in the needs assessment report. The existing Pond Coles School would be demolished. Estimate phase one bond total is thirty-nine to forty-three million dollars. Then there would be a phase two, and the second new building would be constructed in the previously occupied Pond Coles School location. Existing middle school and cafeteria and gymnasiums would be removed, and the new shared space would be constructed between the new buildings. The lower school students would occupy the new school in phase two, and the middle school students would occupy the phase one new school. So the estimated future phase two bond would be forty-two to forty-six million. This option is shown conceptually in the enclosed hypothetical lower and middle school phasing documentation. These conceptual phasing plans are identical for both options one and two. This option would replace both the lower school and the middle school over the period of ten-plus years. The school construction in phase one would be occupied by twenty-twenty-three. Over a period of time, the phase one bond is paid down and debt capacity is regained and increased. This allows the town of Cape Elizabeth a path forward to replace one building at a time without the burden of replacing both schools at once. This option would preclude the use of some economy of scale by constructing both schools at once and require two separate town bonds. So that's option one. Option two would be concurrent lower school and middle school buildings replaced with an estimated combined phase one and phase two with a cost of seventy-one to seventy-seven million. So this option is shown conceptually in the enclosed hypothetical lower and middle school phasing documentation. Note that these conceptual phasing plans are identical. I've already said that like four times. Phase one, a new school building would, a new school building would be constructed constructed adjacent to the existing middle school and occupied temporarily by the lower school students and staff. The existing cafeteria and gymnasiums would remain in place until the second phase of this project. Renovations would be made to the high school to address security and other items identified in the needs assessment report. The existing Pond Coles School is removed. Construction of the phase one new school building would be complete and able to be occupied by fall of twenty-twenty-three. Phase two of this option, the second new building, would be constructed in the previously occupied Pond Coles School location. Existing middle school and cafeteria and gymnasiums would be demolished, and new shared space would be constructed between the new buildings. The lower school students would occupy the new school in phase two, and the middle school students would occupy phase one new building. Construction of the phase two new school building would be completed and occupied by fall of twenty-twenty-four. So this option would replace both the lower and middle school over a period of four years, so it's much quicker. The school constructed in phase one would be occupied by twenty, fall of twenty-twenty-three, I believe, and school constructed for phase two would be occupied by twenty-twenty-four. Economy of scale by executing both projects under one-town bond, however, the town would need to support a larger bond while happening.
So that bond would be that seventy-one to seventy-seven basis.
When would the second school be completed under option one? Probably late in the twenty-eight timeframe or something?
Ten plus years?
Ten plus year.
In one, in option one, yes, correct. So it seems like to me, as I, from the conversation, that phase one and phase two are very similar, with the major difference of phase two is a much quicker process. And that
Option phase, second option and option two?
Yes, thank you, not phases, options, thank you. Option two is a faster process, and then the difference of option two is going out for one bond, whereas option one is going out for two separate bonds over a period of time. But it's essentially the same project in similar phase.
However, more expensive if you break it into two options.
Because it's a ten to twelve million dollars more for option one.
Adeptic program.
Well, you wait for phase two, isn't it?
Yeah. To balance that, in the, in the meeting, we had that conversation of, you can't predict the future, right? You can say that potentially it's more expensive because of work costs, which we know are fixed, Derek has mentioned that in the past, right? But the conversation of, was it you earlier, Andy, who mentioned that who knows what, the state with a different governance, how they may help out, you know, if we so we were talking yesterday, it's almost like a poker game, you can't totally predict how it's going to be. If you wait, we know that the costs of labor are going to go up definitely, the experts are telling us that, but it may work in our favor and it may not, we really don't know that answer. But we do know that labor costs will go up. Option three is a frame-off restoration and renovation of the existing lower and middle schools. Estimated bond size is fifty-three to fifty-eight million. So option three will require phased temporary temporary relocation of all students in the lower and middle schools. Each school will not be occupied during its respective renovations. Due to the central heating system located in the middle school building, all students would be required to be placed in temporary classrooms while the HVAC system is shut down and undergone repair and replacement. It is estimated that the renovations would not be fully complete until the end of summer twenty-twenty-four. It is estimated that forty portable classrooms would be required to support both student bodies for up to eighteen months while this construction takes place. The budgetary quote provided for these portable classrooms does not include utilities, electricity, heat, water, and IT or additional costs that cannot be calculated at this time.
So the fifty-three thousand doesn't include that, fifty-three to fifty-eight?
Correct.
So they figure it would be about two million dollars.
Thousand, million, right, add a zero, sorry.
It would be about two million dollars if we had to get temporary, probably portables for twelve months, three million for eighteen months.
Yeah. So you're adding on, yeah. You're adding on the digital. This option does not solve the issue of an inefficient building footprint and energy consumption. All walls, glazing, and roofs would be brought up to current energy codes and insulation values. However, the existing slabs that connect all the buildings are still in condition where there are high levels of heat loss, negating a significant amount of energy savings. Please note, the current valuation of the combined lower and middle school is approximately twenty-eight million. Due to the phasing challenges and burden of temporary portable student classrooms, and the town maintaining an aging structure that is already nearly its end's light, increasing costs of ownership and operations are too high to maintain and repair. This option is not recommended. The other piece that I thought was interesting that is not written down here about the portables is location. Of where to place forty portables in our district, while this temporary solution would happen. And the educational impact of that. So moving on to option four, security and cafeteria upgrades. So this is an estimated bond of twenty-six million to twenty-nine million. In April twenty-eighteen, Colby Company and Scott Simon Architects were asked to present on a selective approach to address security concerns of the front entrance and cafeteria at the lower and middle school. Enclosed in this memorandum is a copy of the proposed, is that included, actually? Okay, thank you. Copy of the proposed solution concept offered at the town council meeting April thirtieth, twenty-eighteen. This option immediately addresses the security concerns at the lower and middle schools as well as the issue with the overcrowded and inefficient cafeteria. The bulk of construction would take place during the summer months of twenty-twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-two, with the remainder of the construction taking place during the school year with with the remainder of the construction taking place during the school year with limitations but in place to avoid disruption to the students and staff. The new cafeteria and renovated auditorium would be in use by the fall of 2023 or spring 2024. The new cafeteria will be located similarly to what is depicted in April 30th, 2018 presentation. During the construction of the new cafeteria, items identified from the needs assessment would be addressed where possible at the lower and middle school as well. The benefits of building a standalone cafeteria structure is that if the lower and middle school are intended to be demolished and rebuilt in the future, the cafeteria would remain and be incorporated into the new building design, saving Cape Elizabeth from demolishing a recent structure and rebuilding again. So just to clarify that, if this were to happen, this structure would be new, it would have the bells and whistles that we want, and if future renovations were happening, that wouldn't be disrupted. To the cafeteria portion of it, right, not to the entryways. If they were to incorporate, if they, if they were to move ahead with option four, they cannot create entryways that would stand alone. Those would be temporary. So we would be spending money to fix those up that could not last if further renovations were to happen. And I just, you know, well, go ahead.
Did you? Well, I was just gonna say, and I mean, I noticed that they didn't put this option is not recommended, but I overheard some of the meeting, and what it does mean is that we would, if we chose option four, and these aren't our, these aren't our only options, I'm gonna reiterate, whatever it is, but if, if we were looking at these, if we chose option four, we would still have to choose option one or two in the fairly near future. It would be, because that can't address what still needs to be done.
I also think part of why we did hand this out is this is not all the cafeteria and the entryway. And so option four doesn't touch on a lot of what is in the needs assessment that's in red.
So all the red items are not on this?
Those, that's all, these are all the red.
This is all the red?
Right.
Yeah, see, it sounds bad.
No, I see, I mean, I, this is all.
This is complete.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna use, sorry, Caitlin is sitting right here, so I'm gonna just use the example that we've all seen in the band room and the overcrowding and that the, the major issues of the quality of the program, will you nod your head yes, right? So that people know I'm not, I'm not talking out of my ears, that option number four doesn't even come close to dealing with. So it's a very small, and it's a, it's a substantial, it, it makes a dent, for sure, in, in some of the issues we have, and it does deal with some of the issues, but it's a large price tag for dealing with a fraction of what is happening. And I don't mean that as opinion, I'm stating as fact there, so.
I mean, it wouldn't come close. Caitlin told me a story about a student that, I mean, so I have awareness of our ADA issues, but I was wishing you to talk about emergency egress, like from the top floor or the, the stage issue with...
No, we have a student, and Karen, she has a talk about students in a wheelchair, so she get her onto the stage, she can actually do it with her wheelchair. They through teachers' classrooms, so she can access them, but students, so it's a horrifying, she'd have to be carried out. To bring her in for recess, she goes right through the service entrance, so it's not getting in the way. So that wouldn't address that.
Can I, can I just ask for clarification, because it does have on the option four, the cafeteria addition, the auditorium upgrade, and the security, that's actually nine million or the twenty-five million?
On the, on the red list, I was gonna go back.
Right, so there is, there is an additional unspecified. I'm curious what their assumptions are in terms of what this encompasses. Three million dollars for high school renovations to be identified, and five million dollars for other things, it doesn't specify what building.
Actually, thank you, I do stand a bit corrected there. They did allocate, because they recognize that there are things in the high school, thank you, I'm sorry, I had forgotten that from the conversation yesterday. So I just wanna point out what Jeff is mentioning again here. If you go to this sheet that has the list, it does talk about the nine million for the security and the cafeteria, and they do want to, there's in all options, there is, if you look into option three and option two and option one, there is three million allocated to the high school in order to keep the high school going for at least fifteen years until that could be discussed. So, yes, thank you for pointing that out. And then five million in the bond to help deal with some other things on the needs assessment, but it certainly is not exhaustive. Yes, I appreciate that correction.
Did you have something to say?
No.
Okay.
So the, the graph at the very back of the packet, the visual, like, I know something with the viewer, and it just really appeals to me, but I couldn't make sense of it with perspective of the options that are presented, so I think there might be something funky about the, the key.
Yes. So I think it's either mislabeled or maybe it's gonna... You wanna speak here?
Hopefully I'll be helpful. Based on how they described it yesterday, when we were saying down there, it was kinda like, this is how they're looking at over the horizon of when, when we would be going to, when we would be going to bond. So working from left to right, looking at this year, for instance, the lower school would be that first, first sloping line that goes down, so that you, they're looking at going to bond this year, and then that would, that would go out. And then, and then, yeah, the blue line, and then in 2028, you know, based on the phasing, the middle school would then come up in 2028, and then the high school would be forecast another eight-plus years later. And so they'd be looking at that, I think they're looking at that, by the time you would finalize all of it, that would be paid off by 2052.
So is the blue line option one, or which?
The blue line is, has to be, yeah. Is option one.
Three bonds, and the blue line only has two presses.
Yeah.
That's where I got, and then, but...
So should the blue line be option two then?
Well, the blue line terminates there about 2036, and pops back up again when you go to the high school bonding, and then, but yet another sixteen years later, plus or minus, is what they're looking at.
Is, oh, so is the high school, that's a, a future discussion? That's something we're not even talking about, I see, so that's what's throwing me off, okay, okay, okay. So this, the picture prior to 2036 is what we're talking about today?
Yes, exactly.
Got it. All right, I need to say this.
I've got a question.
Yes, Mary Ann.
Matt, it sounds like maybe you were in that meeting as well, and my question is, there are these orange dotted lines that go state-allowed maximum debt level, state-recommended debt level. Are those the same debt levels that you were discussing last meeting with us?
I think the top line is.
The twenty, that would be twenty-seven million?
No, the state-allowed maximum, that's up in the, and that's the high.
But I thought that was like three hundred million or something.
Yeah, the all-in number, I think three hundred plus. The state-recommended debt level, I'm not sure what they use for, what number they use on that.
So I'd be, I'd be interested in finding out where the town council, the town managers' orange line is on this, and actually having some numbers on the chart.
I agree with the numbers, but is there any reason to think that they might not be the same as what we talked about last meeting?
I, only one I think is the same whenever we talked about last meeting, is the maximum one, the one underneath, I'm not sure what the number is and the gap between the two. And you do notice that they do stagger a little bit, and that says, the thought is that over time, the state valuations will change, so that number, you know, your ceiling changes as the town's overall assessed value increases. So that, that was the rationale behind how they did adjust those upwards as well.
Well, I think to address your question, is, I think, my, my assumption is the state-recommended debt level is literally the state recommendation, whereas in the last meeting, you talked about, I'm forgetting, because the audio wasn't very good, the Cape Elizabeth, you got the recommendation from a third-party bond provider, and they said, if you wanna maintain a triple rating, this is where...
Your best to stay within these specific ranges.
Right, so there's the Cape Elizabeth level, and then there's the state-recommended level, which might not be the second.
The gold standard, right?
Yeah, okay.
So Matt, are you saying that depending on whether it's option one or option two, pick a number, seventy-five million dollars? Are you saying that, that based on this graph, you'd be looking to get a payout, a full payback by 2036? And so why, is that, is that typical?
I think you do.
The municipality?
To be honest, if you're looking at option, for two school thing, you'd probably be looking at least twenty years out. So probably 2044 would be, whatever thing, would be more realistic, or twenty, you know, between twenty and forty and forty-four, because you'd probably look at at least a twenty-year bond.
For option two?
Yeah, for option two.
Which is the cheaper of the two?
Yeah.
Twenty forty-four.
If I was making the curves, that's where I would place it before, terminating around forty, forty, between forty and forty-four, depending upon when you went out to bond.
For the two, for the two, not the, the one, when, when it was even going to process.
And do you have any kind of rough idea what the impact is on the portable resident?
Well, I was doing the debt service while we were looking at it.
Not to be, no one's gonna hold it, hold it, hold it.
No, just kidding, these numbers ending here.
Just numbers.
Just numbers, sir. Just numbers. Come on up, middle of May, we'll talk numbers.
Well, the other, the other thing, of course, well, I'll, I'll, I'll see what you say.
Looking at a couple of different ones, over, you know, if you're looking at option one, depending upon how you phase it, you could be looking at somewhere between six-point-two debt service over twenty years, you know, per year allocation to pay off all of that, or if you did it all together, about six million, fifty thousand annually spending. If you looked at option two, you're looking at about five-point-three million a year for debt service annually for twenty years. Option three, which is the frame-off, you're looking at probably three-point-nine-five to four million annually, and then option four, you're looking at just under two million annually. That'd be the debt service for, you know. My assumption on that would be three and a half percent twenty-five of the bond in one year annual payment, everything consistent for what usual terms are, but those are kind of the, that's the brass tacks and all that, no.
But the resident, when he or she goes to voting, generally speaking, would know how much more their taxes are gonna move up, on average, or meeting, or whatever.
Yeah.
Town halls, they would calculate that at some point.
Yeah, they'd be able to figure it out at some point. Right now, like, yeah, you'd have to play around with a little bit as far as growth and other things, but I could figure that out, I'd have to put on the reassessor's hat.
See, the other thing that people haven't talked about is there's other things that the town wants to issue debt for. That isn't even contemplated yet.
Right. Yeah, the whole picture, that's just one, one pixel in the larger image here.
It also mattered at the last meeting, there's also debt coming off of it. So you have to make sure that that's...
So you're retiring, and you're also, you know, you've got operational expenses that may come on board as well as other, you know, items that, you know, flow into that long-term CIP type of thing, but...
But my understanding is those are more known entities than what we're talking about right now, yeah.
Many of those are, yeah.
I got a question here, I guess, for anybody. From what I've learned from attending previous meetings, schools are built for fifty years. Is that still accurate? So if a building is built by 2024 under option one, and the debt is paid up by 2052, that's like twenty-eight years, right? And after that, we'll have another twenty, twenty more years of building life?
You're right. Well, I, not, I remember them saying specifically that the building materials and the way they build now belongs the life of the new buildings longer than current buildings do. So I, I feel like they said seventy to eighty years, but I thought I heard...
But you don't play a huge role in what you choose to build out of.
Do you remember, it's like seventy to eighty, I, that's the number I have in my mind.
Yeah, I mean, the higher, there's much higher quality of building products available right now compared to what it was back then. But that would increase that number, that would be more of a, engineer and architect thing. So you give you that something.
Yeah, I just feel like if you build something, you should build longer than fifty years if possible.
I mean, Derek, did you put a way in on that at all?
No, I tend to, yeah, I, I tend to agree. I think buildings now are built much more towards the fifty to seventy-five year range than the forty to fifty year range of what current standards and details.
But even if it's built to the fifty to seventy-five year range, it's not a teardown at that time, because this wasn't a teardown, right? It's still, it would be something that you could renovate or do things to.
Yeah, at some point, there would be a cost analysis where you could say, does it make sense to renovate?
Where we're at now.
We just, right, exactly. Or we are now. Exactly.
So thank you again to everyone who came tonight and everybody who's listening on the TV. Like we mentioned, as we mentioned at the beginning, there are two more meetings set up. We have Wednesday, March fourth, it'll be six-thirty again, and Tuesday, March seventeenth. What? Oh, we haven't said it yet? We have two meetings. I'm telling you now. The next two meetings, and it may take longer than that as well, but we thought we'd set up two more meetings. It's Wednesday, March fourth, and Tuesday, March seventeenth. Six-thirty here, so we need to double check. So at six-thirty here, we would love it if those of you who have been participating can continue, but we understand that when you made the initial commitment to this, that these dates weren't on, so if there's conflict or you're unable to attend, you can just email myself or Donna and let us know. I feel really great about tonight's meeting, I think we got a lot covered, I think we had some important discussion that needs to be had, and I think there's further discussion clearly, I think we were starting to get into more conversation that I felt like could have been bubbling into another two-hour meeting that we don't wanna have at eight-thirty tonight as prepared. So that being said, if you have questions, if you have comments, if you have requests of what you would like us to discuss, please email them again to myself or Donna, and we will take that all into consideration. And again, we will do our best to get you the materials ahead of time to review, but we do best we can. So anything else? No, all right. Thank you again to everyone, we really appreciate it. There, we did send out, or send around a little pad for attendance, if you could just, even if you were outside the group in the audience there, if you don't mind signing the pad.